I try to keep you out of it, I really do.
It's alright.
Would Tim speak on agenda items?
Or?
I guess it is, I don't know what's happening.
It'd have to be the...
I don't wanna know what's happening.
It'd have to be after the end.
That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a neighbor issue.
That's why we got a code officer.
Yeah.
It's now six thirty, I'd like to call this, uh... June eighth, meeting of the City of Manassas and City Council meeting to order. Can I have a real call, please?
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Here.
Councilman Nester?
Present.
Councilman Gregor? Mayor Moser?
Present.
We have four present, one temporarily absent, and he'll be here soon by his phone call. So we know the court.
At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Holmes to lead us in prayer.
And thank you, Mayor, shall we bow our heads? Father God, we just look recently back as we celebrated the day of Pentecost, Lord God, the day that you shed the Holy Spirit, oh God, and empowered, oh God, of the church. You were here teaching, Father God, on this earth, oh God, the disciples, you were here physically, but you left your spirit, oh God, and called the spirit the church, the ecclesia, oh God, and the church has empowered, oh God, to glorify your name, Father God. We come even tonight gathered as a people, oh God, for the city of Manassas, that the city of Manassas would give glory to you, Lord God, that we would represent your glory, oh God, in the earth, oh God, that we would be a people that are one accord, coming together, Lord God, making, making lives better and changing, oh God, that which is wrong and doing that which is right. Father God, tonight, the mayor and the council, which we ask you to continue to bless them, may they come together in peace and harmony to accomplish things, yes, to work at the truth and to know the truth, and the truth will indeed set all of us free, but to do it in peace and harmony. Father God, you have taught us to do all things decently and in order, let that order be here once again tonight as they gather, Lord God, to bring about a better day, not only for Manassas, but for this entire valley. We ask you to bless and cover us, oh God, with your spirit, cover us with your love, oh God, cover us, oh God, even with the angels that would be encamped around us to give us clear direction. This we pray together in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask council to review the minutes, I think everybody's had a chance to look at them and make a motion to accept them.
Mayor, motion to approve previous sessions of minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
There's only one issue you're looking at. Ms. Thomas, can you tell me this mural?
Yes.
For seventy-five-hundred dollars?
Yes.
It's not gonna be a mural like when Matt's...
No, it's already finished, it's at the Veterans Memorial one, it's a military mural.
Oh, it's a military, okay.
Yes, they completed the one that was started last year, and they finished the whole wall.
Okay, I thought it was another one.
No, it's the same wall, they just completed it.
And I was afraid it may not be the same quality as that.
No, it's the same people who started the wall.
The ones on the walls that I see.
Yeah, it's completed, yes.
Alright, that's good.
You should take a look at it, it's really nice.
Okay, that's good, I'm glad to clear it up, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, nice.
At this time, I'd like to, um... Let's see, the correspondent says, the only thing I want to mention real quick is that we did receive seven more properties from the Westmoreland County, they will be on the agenda next time, that the county land bank wants to acquire in order for demolitions to take place from the redev- from the repository. With that, I'm gonna ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everybody. Notification letters were sent out to the owners and lien holders for all the properties for the demolition hearings last month. There will be a demolition hearing for the first meeting in July for eleven more properties. I also worked with the engineers and the contractors for Phase Three A and Three B of the sewage projects, going over all their bonds, insurance, and everything that was required to be submitted prior to beginning their work. Phase Three A has been approved to begin by the USDA. Phase Three B will shortly be coming, probably next week. That's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask our city treasurer to give us his report if he has one.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Manassas, this is my report for the month of May twenty-twenty-three. Garbage fees revenue, garbage fees current, May we received four thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars, year-to-date, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, budget amount thirty, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Delinquent, May, three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, eleven cents, year-to-date, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and one cent, budget amount eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty. Amount collected by Portnoff, May, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, ten thousand, year-to-date, ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, that was included in the above total for the year-to-date. Penalties and interest from Portnoff, May, seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, year-to-date, two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents, budget amount two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Garbage fees collected for twenty-twenty-four, May, twenty dollars, year-to-date, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, budget amount one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Totals for May, ten thousand, eighty dollars and five cents, year-to-date, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents, budget amount four hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. City real estate taxes revenue, current city's taxes, May, seven hundred and two thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-three cents, year-to-date, one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, budget amount two million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. City taxes prior years collected by the city, none collected this month, year-to-date, eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents, budget amount five thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Subtotal year-to-date for the city taxes, one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County Tax Claim Bureau, spent thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents, year-to-date, ninety-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, budget amount one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Total year-to-date, delinquent taxes and city taxes claimed, one million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. City real estate tax distribution, as of May thirty-first, year-to-date, general fund received one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent, budget amount one million, four hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Depth service received three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-three dollars and nine cents, year, budget amount three hundred and eighty dollars, thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Year-to-date, budget amount for our library, we received thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents, budget amount thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Parks, year-to-date, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars and nine cents, budget amount one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents. Year-to-date, received one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents, budget amount two million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfer tax, May we received five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents, year-to-date, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents, budget amount eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, May, eighty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents, year-to-date, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, budget amount five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Merchantile tax, May, fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty cents, year-to-date, sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, budget amount twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Local service tax, May, we received thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, year-to-date, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred, or two hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents, budget amount fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tax certifications, May, we received three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, year-to-date, eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, budget amount twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Missed the lien letters, May, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, year-to-date, eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, budget amount fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Line usage fee on secured payments, May we received three hundred and seventy-four dollars, year-to-date, ten thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, line usage fee, May, sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and five cents, year-to-date, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Total line usage account, year-to-date, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven thou- nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month of May.
Okay, you need a motion to accept that?
Yes.
Motion to accept the garbage fees and silly real- city real estate taxes collected for the month of May twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Present.
Mayor Moser?
Present.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to ask our city controller to give us her report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The general fund shall refer savings checking account, bank reconciliation as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. The beginning bank balance as of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, was seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty, sixty-four cents. Deposits, one million, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. Expenses, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. The ending balance as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, was one million, one hundred and six thousand, seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. The outstanding checks, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and thirty-four cents. There are no outstanding deposits. The reconciliation to the bank statement is eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. New business, I'm gonna take just a moment in talking a bit about some of the things that have taken place over the last couple of weeks. Everybody's aware of the fire that we had at C Coats and Boost Mobile here just down the road here on Donner. That was a pretty intense fire, and I really want to take my hat off to our fire chief who coordinated that, and all the supporting groups that really came in and helped us out with that fire. That was quite a big deal. Both buildings were a total loss, both buildings will be demolished very soon. As the solicitor said, the sewer project Three A contract has been submitted with all the supporting information to the USDA. They have a, a pre-construction meeting scheduled for June the fifteenth. Three B is very, very close, I think that we got the last of the paperwork together today, it still has to go through the USDA, and they have their little things that they do. Hopefully, they'll include that in the June fifteenth, but there's no guarantee of that.
They've reviewed the majority of the paperwork, there was just a clarification and an insurance policy number needed on the certificate of insurance, so I think it's likely that we can push them to get it done by then.
The sewer project four is still underway on, in the Ninth Street Park. They ran into solid rock first off, and that really slowed them down a bunch. Now they're into something that's closer to peat moss, from one extreme to the other. That should be winding up here fairly quickly. The paving, paving, the following paving and opening up the roads is of critical importance to the city, and I've been pushing them as much as I possibly can. They've gone into Delaware and they put in the base coat, but they still have to go in and do the top coat and get it all leveled out and so forth. They're caught, that's on a very steep incline, and they're having all kinds of issues with it, which is not my problem, they've got to make it right, and they're working on it. Hopefully, by next week, that'll start taking much better shape than it is now. Nine oh six is, where they cross nine oh six down on the other end of town. I think that, and I don't understand how PennDOT does this, but they are going to use a cement mixture to fill in that, that crossing there as opposed to pavement. That's a PennDOT call, and that's what they're gonna do. Sixth Street statue is in place. I want to really stress that they've got a top coat on the courts right now, and nobody needs to walk on that for twenty-four hours. It's being clearly marked, the police are gonna be patrolling it especially hard, but walking on that can cause damage to the, to court that is very difficult to correct after this, so just twenty-four hour period. We're trying to do something nice up there, and hopefully, we can get that to, to finish up. Work on the sewer project Three C is, is still in the works. It's going to be some time before that really comes through, anywhere from a couple of weeks to as much as maybe four, four months before the USDA finally clears all the hurdles for getting that project going. That is the big project, that's the approximately ten million dollar project that will be done in order to go manhole to manhole throughout the city to, to line the, the sewer lines. So we're still working on that, but there's, there's some issues that they're still having to work on that. And basically, I think they're waiting on the Corps of Engineers to approve the, what they call the GP eleven permit, which is, really has to do with DEP and the way that the water is handled. Just a reminder to everybody, I'm not exactly sure why it worked out this way, but when we advertised the city council meetings throughout the year in, in January of this year, we specified July would be July the sixth and the twentieth, that's the first and third Thursdays of the month for July. So everybody needs to keep that in mind, it won't be the second and fourth, it'll be the first and the third. The, the town hall meeting will be on the second, but it's just a little bit different, it's gonna allow at least a three-week period between the end of the meetings in July and our, our subsequent in August, so there's a, a chance for people on council to get a little bit of a break there. That's all I had for, for those things. I've got some motions if somebody...
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to make a motion to make final payment for completion of the mural project at the Anthony Madison Veterans Memorial Park in a total amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, with payments being remitted to each of the artists, Shane Philster, thirty-five hundred, Scott Brozovic, thirty-five hundred, and Max Gonzalez at five hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
Any questions?
Comment?
Okay.
If you haven't driven by and seen what they did up there, you need to do so, it is beautiful. That was a really outstanding job, Lois.
They did, they did an excellent job, yeah.
Please pass that to them.
Oh, they know, we're gonna, eventually, um, once we can get them all together, we're gonna have them come back so they can actually take a pa- a picture with the paper and just so people can get a chance to meet them.
Every time, I, I make sure I drive up there now just so I could look at that, that was really, really outstanding.
It is outstanding. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion for approval payment for sewer rehabilitation project Phase Three, payment requisition and certificate number six, in amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents, to WEC Inc., consulting engineers for bidding phase activities within the project.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion for approval sewer rehabilitation project Phase Three, payment requisition and certificate number seven, for bidding phase services to WEC Inc., consulting engineers, in amount of five thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dol- five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
A motion to approve exoneration of taxes for a disabled veteran residing at One Pioneer Drive in the city of Manassas. Tax map, tax map number twenty dash zero one dash one three dash zero dash zero nine two, effective July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, for the exoneration of twenty-twenty-three real property taxes on the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Gary Smith to the zoning board for a three-year term to begin immediately and end on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment for Morneck Excavation Inc. for repairable water line issue at the city park from the Parks Fund in amount of two hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment for Morneck Excavation Inc. for repairable water line break at the city garage from the general fund in amount of two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment for Morneck Excavation Inc. for the emergency demolition of the Boost Mobile building on Donner Avenue, following a recent fire at the structure from the general fund in amount of four thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the taxes exoneration request of a lot located at One Sixty-One Schooner Maker Avenue, property ID number twenty dash zero two dash zero three dash zero dash one six three, as recently approved by the City of Manassas Tax Exoneration Board for the period up to twenty-twenty-one, one thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Who owns that property?
Um, Marinos.
I think that's the property that's between his house and his son's house, they have a lot between theirs, and then they have, they treat it as a, a, a shared yard.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Aye. Uh, just something that has come up and something we can talk about a little bit here is when delinquent garbage funds are collected by Portnoff, and this really applies to delinquent taxes as, as acquired from the county, those, those funds go directly into the general account. That is really the recommendation by our, our auditors and, and so forth, but it's just something we can discuss if we want to talk about that anymore.
I'd like to see it go, any delinquent garbage to go in the refuse account.
Why?
Because that's what originally should have been.
Well, but then by the same token, you can't pay for delinquent garbage collection. It would be for future garbage collection.
Aren't we paying Portnoff to collect these funds?
Yes.
Yes.
And that would help recoup some of our cost?
Right.
To these lawyers, so I think it should stay where it goes to the general fund, my personal opinion.
And with that, you have to remember too, anything that you don't collect, you're, you're still paying the refuse bill. If there's a shortage in the garbage fund, it's coming out of the general fund.
And which has been the case in the past.
And it's likely to continue to be the case. Okay, um... Tony, would you like to give us your report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, forty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Park Fund in amount of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from Liquid Fuels Account in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Recreation Board Fund in amount of four hundred and sixty dollars and eight cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll. Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the refuse account in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
A motion to approve the transfer of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-two cents from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
These are the following balances in the accounts. American Rescue Plan, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Debt Services, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eighty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Fire Escrow is twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and nineteen cents. Grant Fund has forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents. Line Usage has six hundred and six, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Liquid Fuels has two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents. Parks has seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Payroll has nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Recreation has two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. The Refuge Account has two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. The General Fund and the Community Bank is fourteen thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. The General Fund overall has eight hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. And the Healthcare has four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis, would you like to give us your report, please?
Good evening everyone. I'd like to defer giving my report to the twenty-second, but also to you would like to commend all the fire department, EMS, and the police, everyone at the fire that took place downtown. It was an intense fire, but just to see everybody at work, we just want to thank you once again for keeping everyone safe.
Councilman Gregor, would you like to give us your report?
I'll defer to the Jan- the Jul- yeah, the June, uh, twenty-second meeting.
Oh, you skipped John, my goodness.
He had trouble talking.
He's happy about it.
Ditto.
Ditto. I love it.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment.
I got four major issues here. One. Can anyone, including the mayor, make a decision without the rest of the council member?
Excuse me?
Can any one council member, including the mayor, they make a decision involving Manassas property without the other ones voting?
Anything with value, no.
Okay, so this lady that you have over here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Was that your call only, or was there also a participating council?
There was a consensus.
All five of you?
There was a consensus.
Okay, now, do you know what kind, uh, kind of worms you opened up? For instance, what happens if a property gets damaged near a wall collapses? Who's gonna be responsible?
Mr. Telegraphus, I, I think you're jumping to conclusions here.
It's important question.
What you don't know is that we've been working with her to cover things like insurance. There's a business owner that was.
So you do this for anybody in Manassas? Or do we, or do you pick and choose one?
This is the only fire that I know of that had such a substantial impact.
It might be a flood, it might be a hurricane.
I'm not gonna predict the future.
No, but the thing is, that's not the role of the taxpayers who elected the council.
So this body up here is not support, supposed to support, support its citizens.
Oh, oh, individual.
That's what you're saying, that's what you're saying.
Not supposed to support the majority.
I suggest you move on.
Wouldn't we move on? First of all, I'm talking to the council member because you didn't vote on.
But you're, you're also.
You didn't vote on.
You're also making accusations like they didn't consider these factors.
I'm asking questions.
It's just not true. It's just not true.
Slow down, Ernie, slow down, Ernie.
I'm talking to the council members.
Okay.
So when they opened up this, that means now we go to the reverend over here, the pastor, he wants a crosswalk. Then you have Mr. Bufa, he wants a loading zone. So where do you draw the line of catering to specific special interests? And when do you step in for the majority of the taxpayers? I want that distinction. Because you guys are not using the, the, the third-class city code appropriately. That's, that's issue number one. Now, number two. Manassas being the biggest water consumer of the authority, no council member showed up over there to participate where the majority of people did not want the, the authority to be dissolved, and then it goes to private interests, and then they're gonna jack up the rates. And, and, no council member wanted to represent. There were council members from DeNora, Donneby, Valverde, there were a bunch of them. Manassas being the biggest stakeholder in the water authority, nobody showed up to take a stand for the public, and then in the, uh, media and the newspaper, the mayor says he, he hopped out. So, so, so nobody is working for the taxpayers who voted for you guys to represent them. They, they just, the taxpayers don't want an extra, uh, increase? And all I know, there's malfeasance going on, okay? And in the private sector, if they can't do their job, they all get fired, and new people get in to take their position. But that's not true in politics. Okay, number three.
No, let me address that, Ernie.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't at the meeting.
I was.
How do you know that I wasn't involved? Because I was involved, I just couldn't make the meeting. So don't tell me that I, no, no, it's my turn to, I'm responding, I'm responding to you. You said council. Guess who's sitting up here on council? I am.
Okay, what did you do?
I, never mind what I did.
Okay.
But I did, I did a lot. I did a lot, I contacted a lot of people. And guess what happened last night? What happened at the meeting?
Well, because a hundred and twenty people.
You're, you're right. That's right.
That's right, but we were there to book, and he said no. We didn't go there to see how we're gonna play politics.
I didn't play politics. I called, I talked to people.
You're not telling us specifics, darn.
I can't give, I can't, I can't give you the specifics.
That's a remnant of the secret society, so I can't tell you nothing, but this is the way it's gonna go.
You know what, Ernie? Sometimes you're so off the wall, you're unhinged.
Well, maybe I'm off the wall, but.
You are unhinged.
I'm talking direct about the public. Okay, here's something else. Since you guys can't answer that, the other thing is, no one's taking a stand on the school. Again, no, no one's gonna declare some sort of letter or something to tell these people who run in the school district any way they want to charge us more taxes.
Ernie, they're their own government entity.
Well, at least you saw you, so make a stand.
There's nothing anybody here can.
You can make an official declaration of where you stand on this. So the public will know they elected people that will represent the good for them. Okay, but if, if everybody's keeping their mouth closed, then what do we got? We don't got representation anywhere, the school or here.
Do you go to the school board meetings?
I did before. They only give me three minutes.
That's who you have to yell at.
Well, I'm going up for, I couldn't go this Tuesday, I'll go on the twentieth. Okay, then we've got something else, because you guys. I, I wanna ask Tony, can we use any of the old, uh, not the old, the, uh, with that rescue funds? Because the mayor says we're gonna be knocking down those two buildings. With what funds?
County, county art money.
You're not sure of that?
Absolutely, I'm sure of that.
You are, okay, when are they gonna do it then?
Well, as soon as we get the.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's sure, and then you guys give us general answers with no meat to it.
It's going to happen, Ernie.
Can we ask, Tony, is it possible to use the rescue funds that you said you have a balance of two hundred and forty thousand? Could that be applied?
Okay, very possibly. But furthermore, what you don't know is when the situation happened, and it's very unfortunate it happened, but the question had to be asked. And I believe I asked the mayor the question on the phone when he called me about what was going on. And I said, he said, are you okay with getting him an emergency demo? What did I ask you? Who's paying, who's paying for it? Okay? And I said, if we have to take care of it right now, it's an emergency demo, it's an emergency demo. It's what it is. But who owns the building? Did they have insurance?
No.
Are we, let me finish. Are we going after them because we're gonna recruit the costs?
We should.
These are all questions that I believe everybody here would understand.
So far, they're not doing nothing.
How do you?
Ernie, it's only been down for two weeks. God didn't move the, everything that fast. Will you slow down on it? We're going to do what we have to do.
That has a, a building down there on Fifth Street. You guys moved.
Ernie, Ernie.
You just jumped from.
Ernie, what would you have suggested they do? You had a building that was in danger of collapsing on a street. Should they have just sat on their hands and tried to find the owner?
We've got the same situation there. That seamstress building looks like it, it could go.
All that they.
Arden is a severe storm, and that building will move. That's all I know. But, but nobody's moving that fast for that, right?
I, I think the other building was in a little bit more jeopardy of a problem.
Well, okay, so there's different degrees. But the thing is, what I'm trying to say is, can we use those funds to knock this down?
And he suggests.
Because I don't think he's gonna get it from the county.
I think, one, we'll get it from the county. Two, if I remember correctly, I just signed a check here paying for it for the demolition. So, yes, we're paying for it. Are we going to go after if we can?
Are you?
Yes, absolutely.
Both of them, both of them.
If there's insurance, you'd go after them.
Yes, they both.
If there's no insurance?
If there is insurance.
Put a lien on their property.
What's that?
Then we put a lien on the property.
On both properties?
On the.
Or just one?
One of them has insurance, one of them does not.
Do you know what fire insurance is? Do you know that we have an account for that? You know what that involves?
Yeah, but why would the city?
You know what's that, involved in that? Before those people can get the money for those buildings for their losses, that money goes where? Joe, where's that money go?
Into the fire escrow account of the city of Manassas.
And, and until, and until that building's torn down, they don't get their money.
Okay, now, when they tear it down, do, do you get that money from the cost of tearing it down? You're gonna get it out of that fund?
Yeah.
You will.
Yeah.
That's how it works.
That's how it works, Ernie. So don't, don't sit here and tell us that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing.
I'm not saying that.
No, you're making accusations.
You're making generalizations.
No, no, you're making accusations instead of asking questions.
I'm making questions, and I'm trying to connect the dots.
I think everybody in this room would disagree with you.
I don't think so, and I got it on tape anyway.
Good.
That's good for you.
So does the city.
Yeah, well, play it back sometimes, so you could know what's going on.
I'm still gonna call them accusations.
Gotta love you, Ernie, gotta love you.
Is it another question because you only said?
No, I said four.
Yeah, you're out.
Five.
You're out.
I thought I got four.
Thank you.
Try to add things up more about progress here.
I can still count on one hand, thank you.
Are there any other comments that Pete, anybody'd like to make?
Who can follow that?
Hearing none? Somebody like to adjourn the meeting?
What did I do? I contacted some people. And? Had some discussions with them. And I'm not at liberty to discuss who that was. It's not a secret, Ernie. There's people out there that don't want to get involved in stuff.
Well, how this purpose become?
Well, you know what? If I, if I was at liberty to tell you who I talked to, I would do so. But they don't want to get involved. A lot of people did get involved. And look what happened.
I think they did.
Yes, they did. I had a lot of information because I had a pipeline into the water company that I knew different people. And I, I, I passed it around to the people that were, could do something. Yeah. And, but what was really offensive about what happened, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm not attacking anyone on the council over there currently. But that would have been like when we had the primary for, uh, the mayor's position. And primary was over, and the current council at the time had decided to dissolve the sewage authority.
They did?
No, we didn't dissolve it. But there was a push by certain individuals to do that. Certain individuals. Just certain individuals, not these guys, certain individuals. They, they came and they wanted us to do that. And we refused. And you know why we refused? Cause we didn't know who was gonna be in office in January.
But this is before November or after?
This was before November. These people, as far as I'm concerned, were making a lame duck decision, which I don't think they should have made. And the people of Charleroy, the ones that had a voice, stood up and said no. That's what would have happened here. I could just see if we'd have put it on our agenda last June, or the June before, that we were going to dissolve the, the, uh, the sewage authority. I could just seen the people coming through the door. And they would have been right.
Well, I'm glad you took a stance. I just thought everybody takes that.
You can take a stand without being out there in public and insulting people.
Nobody was insulting anybody there.
You were here insulting people.
I wasn't insulting anybody, I was asking.
Yeah, please do, please do, please do.
Okay, I don't know. Okay, I don't know why I don't want to know the people, but what was the substance?
The substance? Okay, let's, here, here's, here's my concern. You have a, an authority, which is doing an extremely good job, from what I can see, as far as...
So you're not in favor of dissolving the authority?
I'm never, I'm never even in favor of dissolving any authority and giving it to a private entity.
No, not any...
No, no, any authority.
The specific authority.
No, I'm, I'm not in favor of dissolving authorities, period.
This authority, Water Authority.
What didn't you understand, Ed?
No, you give me a general answer.
No, I'm not... All right, I am not in favor of dissolving the Water Authority of Charleroy. Okay?
Okay.
Totally against it. And I have my, my personal reasons and my concern for everybody out there, because I know what's gonna happen with a private entity. They're gonna come in, they're gonna take it over, and guess what's gonna happen to our rates? Okay? That's why I was, I'm against it. Not because I dislike the council or the borough people over there. It's not that I dislike anybody. It's just I know what happens.
Well, okay, I understand what you're saying. But being there and being from Manessin, you made the comment to that...
I couldn't be there.
Pardon me?
I couldn't be there.
No, but you...
No, 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 I'm saying if you were there...
Oh, I, I would've, I would've, I would've told him exactly why I was against it. And then that one individual who, I can't remember the individual's name, he didn't want people speaking up that weren't taxpayers.
About that person.
I'm not talking about that person. But what I'm saying is, then someone else said, "I wanna hear everybody."
Yes.
And he, he had it right. It's like here. You know, if we had a hundred and forty people show up, we couldn't let you all speak like you did for ten minutes.
I agree.
You know, they, they, that individual, who I thought did a wonderful job, three minutes. And everybody got the chance to speak. Because this, this didn't, this issue didn't just involve the citizens of Charleroy.
It's about fourteen communities.
Exactly.
Then why didn't some member of the council appear as a voice?
What makes you think that we wouldn't if it had gone, gone forward?
Well, we do not...
No, it would not have been too late. They had it advertised for next Wednesday.
Other council members stood up and made comments. Some residents stood up and made comments.
And, and that's great.
Why wasn't someone from the council standing?
Perhaps, perhaps no one could make it. I had personal reasons I couldn't make it.
Everybody has to have a reason. Everybody has to have a, an idea what they think about this authority.
Yeah.
Everyone, I do, everyone has to have an idea. Is everyone, is everyone in agreement to what that article said?
I'm, I can only answer for myself.
I understand.
Have you heard anybody up here say that they agree with what the Borough of Charleroy wanted to do to that authority? Because I haven't. I don't think anybody has taken that stance.
That's my question. Is that the consensus?
I, I will guarantee you this.
I think I'm pretty sure.
I will guarantee you this.
Let me, let me make a statement here, because first off, I was quoted as not having a comment when the newspaper called me up. That's what I just said. I just said that. The bottom line is that, yeah, I do have an opinion. First off, the Water Authority, that they're trying to get money from the City of Charleroy or the Borough of Charleroy. That is the whole goal behind this. And what they're trying to do is put that on the backs of all the supporting businesses or communities they have around it. And that's not appropriate in my mind. Secondly, you can't build an economy on taxes alone. You've gotta build an economy on bringing, bringing people into the area, bringing new businesses in. That's the way you grow an economy and not by increasing taxes. So I'm very much against the, the dissolving of the authority. I think that's just economically the wrong way to approach it.
So you think the authority at this moment, Charleroy, this authority is doing a decent job?
I think they're doing better than, than any other thing that's available to us right now.
Would you voice the opinion that if it came to a place where a private concern tried to come in and take control of the authority, would you fight that?
Probably. Because first off...
Like Ernie said...
How did the, how, how did the Water Authority come to be what it is today? And you have to really think back about that. It's different than the Sewage Authority or any other authority we have. It is an authority that took place, I think during World War II is when it really took place, maybe before.
Nineteen thirty-four.
Nineteen thirty-four. But anyway, the point being is, it is a Charleroy asset. It is not a Manessin asset. The water towers that we have up here, the water lines that we have are all Charleroy. And yet, we have no representation on that authority whatsoever.
Well, we got it.
In nineteen thirty-four, nobody cared in Manessin. And that's where we are.
I don't push to put people there.
Well, I'm just saying that we have no, we have no voice in the authority nor in the government of Charleroy.
If you're gonna put somebody in, put Tony in, because he's not...
We can't put, we can't put anybody in. You don't understand what I'm saying.
We have no say in what they do there.
We have no say. We can...
None.
None at all.
Yeah.
We're their biggest client, and we...
There, I, I wouldn't use the word client. There's the most customers, water customers here.
Well, how, the papers, did I think five members on the authority?
And they're all in Charleroy.
Okay, so they're all Charleroy members?
Yes.
So how, how does one become a member of the authority?
It's the Municipality Authorities Act. It says you have to be a resident of Charleroy or a taxpayer business owner of Charleroy.
That seems strange, because we're saying Manessin is a...
It is strange. What I'm saying is, back in nineteen thirty-four, when that was established, Manessin took no stake in it. They assumed no role.
And Joe, what's the difference between, the legal difference between the Sewage Authority and the Water Authority? How come Manessin residents can be members of the authority, but...
Manessin was the incorporating body of the Mon Valley Sewage Authority, where everybody's sewage goes for treatment. It's a joint authority between you and DeNora. That's why there's board members from both municipalities. Whereas in Charleroy, it was incorporated by the Borough of Charleroy back in nineteen thirty-four. So they're the only municipality that was allowed to appoint board members. It's been that way for almost a hundred years at this point.
Yeah, but in nineteen thirty-four, there wasn't fourteen communities.
I understand that, but this community, this community needed water, right?
Yeah, what do you do? You beg for the water?
What would you recommend us do, Ernie?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, Manessin didn't say, hey. It, it probably was more economically sensible to contract with the authority at the time.
I told you to apply economic pressure and have the big boys have they say so.
It's not possible.
If the new council comes in, Joe, what would it take for them to change that?
To change?
If Manessin can have a representative?
Interesting question.
Yeah, it's an interesting questing, question. I don't know if it's...
We've got great people on council. Is that something we can approach him with?
I, I don't know if it's a legal possibility.
They have to change their whole charter, and then they have to go through the state reps to be approved.
I, I don't know if it's a legal possibility.
Attorney Joe, have a specific answer the next minute. We wanna know, and we know what to do.
I, I think the Borough has its hands full with the issues right now.
So the authority, the authority structure here...
They have a board of directors. They're a public entity.
So they, they, they uphold the idea of what the authority is and what...
They are akin to city council here, and they operate the Water Authority.
Is there, is there Pennsylvania law on that?
The Municipality's Authorities Act.
Pastor Tim, would you like to talk to us about your crosswalk?
Well, being that I was mentioning the paper, that's where I found out about the crosswalk and the mention in the paper. We, I personally did not request one, but I think it's a really good idea. The reasoning behind it is, first off, Manessin does own that street. It's not like nine oh six is controlled by the state. So with, with that, we've increased the number of children that we have coming into the coffee shops regularly. And we've also increased, I believe, the, the volume of business for the library. We have the Mommy and Me program that takes place on Tuesdays, where the young moms and, and their little ones are exercising upstairs, and then they come in, they come to get coffee, and then they inevitably go over to the library. We also have, there are Storytime program that takes place. We're, we're getting ready to launch our gym, which would be from kindergarten through adults, and that's gonna increase the number of kids coming in. The public parking there next to the library, plus our parking, plus people park on Donner all the time. There's a lot of, lot of traffic, kid traffic coming through there. Just as a matter of fact, yesterday, I was up on the third floor looking over our, our gym that we're getting ready to. We just got all the security taken care of up there. And I saw literally a little kid run across the road unattended by the parents. The parent was running after the kid to get him. And not that a crosswalk is going to stop anything, but at least it's, it's, it's like a stop sign. People can stop for a stop sign like you're having trouble up on Third Street for the stop sign, or not. But at least there's something there. I'm sure, I, I believe that Officer Uhas could, could you talk about just how the traffic is coming out of the alley there, coming off of Donner, and people... We have the school bus stop right there, that the kids are getting on and off the buses and coming over to the coffee shop as well. So, so just a, a number of factors there. Tony, you had, you had asked specifically in the paper for me to respond to it. So that's, that's really my response. If the council would do something about that, that'd be great. If you can't, I understand. You know, I understand budgeting and the city's tight and, and things like that. I would never wanna hurt the city. Just trying to figure out some way to keep the people safe. We have increased the volume of traffic. We have anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand, you know, people coming into the coffee shop on a weekly basis. How many of those are small children, I, you know, I couldn't give you, I couldn't give you a number. But we have increased the downtown traffic of people, and because of that, I, you know, I think, I just wanna, it's just, for me, it's a safety issue. I just want, you know, once again, you know, locks don't keep thieves out of homes, they keep honest people honest. And a crosswalk, I think, will keep honest people honest.
How about one of the, the parking lot belongs to the library?
No, it doesn't. It's public.
It doesn't?
No, belongs to the city.
The city? So anybody in the city can park there?
That's correct.
So what happens to the people who go to the library?
They can park there, too.
They can park in the library.
You can only pick so many cars.
And it's not been a problem so far.
Then they park on the street.
Well, he's parked about seven hundred people.
Well, but he's got a parking lot. There's a parking lot across the street.
People park on Donner, people park on, on Third Street.
Well, you got that coat plant, and then you got the Zs, I think they fill it up.
Yeah. Parking has not been an issue thus far, that I can tell.
I think that would be a really good, Ernie, with all your complaints about the city, I think that would be a really good problem to have, that we didn't have parking. There was so busy.
I never saw that. I never saw that it was overloaded with parking.
Right, and it hasn't been. We've, we've been, our hours and the library hours are, are different, different times. They overlap some, but they're different times, so, so we haven't had a problem. And that's, I talked to the library board even before we opened. So that way I could explain to them, and say, listen, if there's ever an issue, please just let us know, because we want to be good neighbors.
The city does. The city? But how comes David's out there?
Well, he's part of the city, too.
No, he ain't. He doesn't work in the city. Okay, so...
We're all citizens. We're all citizens. We all do things for the city.
So everybody's koo bai ya in your... I, I don't like that.
Okay, fine.
We, we shovel the sidewalk sometimes, you know, for...
Well, it's a sidewalk here, yeah.
Our side plus that sidewalk.
I never saw that side.
You're there all the time, right, Ernie? Yeah, hold it.
I go back here, back and forth three times a day. I stop here two times a day in the library.
And I, I really didn't think that public safety would be an issue that would be a controversy.
In the past, you did have one death in that area.
Yeah, but that was when?
I have one question for you, Ernie. Ernie, how much is a child's life worth?
Listen, so, so the city's gonna be a nanny.
How much, how much is a child's life worth?
The government is the nanny for all the problems in the city.
Okay. Let's, let's keep it, let's keep it calm.
Shame on you, Ernie. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you.
That's right, but it ain't the government.
Government's responsibility is the safety of its citizens, especially the children's.
You don't got enough money to cover everybody's ass. You don't...
You're right. How much is, how much does paint cost, Ernie? I'll pay for it.
That ain't the point. If the issue is, the government's gonna be a nanny, is there all the possibilities?
No, we take care of our community.
Come on, let's slow, let's slow down just a little bit here. We're getting out of, out of hand here.
Anything else?
I, I don't, I don't have anything else.